With that being said, we'll go ahead and call our monthly meeting to order for the month of March 2020. If everyone will please rise, we'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. It is primary election night, so if we get some good news, we'll pass that along and we'll see what happens. Or if we get some bad news, we might pass it along. We'll just pass what we can find out. But thank you for coming out and hopefully everybody went out and voted today. The council, you've had a chance to look over the agenda here for tonight. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Wes, I've got one tiny addition I wanted to ask Brian, just a quick question on chlorine in the water.
Chlorine in the water, only other business.
Not a long question, a short question.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, a show of hands, please. Five oh. Our agenda is approved. You've also had a chance to look over our minutes of our regular meeting from February. If there's no further discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
No movement.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. And all in favor, a show of hands? Five oh on the approval of those minutes. Agenda item number four is our public comment. This is something that we've started out new. Started it last month, but we want to encourage the citizens to comment at this time on any item that is on the agenda here tonight. And your comments is specifically for the agenda itself. You'll have three minutes to come to the podium. Anybody have any comments at this time that they'd like to talk about on the agenda for tonight? You can make your way to the podium. There being no movement, we will move on, close our public comments at the beginning of our meeting. We'll also have an opportunity for public comments at the end. Our budget report by Peggy Shoud, our finance officer.
All right. For the month of February, February's activities for the revenue, for the general ledger, for the general funds, excuse me, was $102,287, with 78% of the budget met. For expenditures, we expensed $106,482, with 59% of the budget met. For the water and sewer, the revenues were $101,357, with 70% of the budget revenue met. And with the expenditures for the water and sewer, we expensed $88,646,000, with 50% of the expenditures for the budget met. Our central depository, we have $3,017,600. And for the public fund, for the streetscape project, we still are at $1,736,875 of money that has not been expensed. Do I have any questions?
Thank you for that report. Thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing. Many of you know that streetscape project is still ongoing, and Brian Edwards is going to enlighten us a little bit here on how far we've come and where we're headed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to use this graphic over here. Charlie, does this work? Or are you going to pull it over that way?
Just turn it towards you.
Oh, I mean, the council needs to see it.
Let me look back.
Council folks see that?
Oh, yeah.
You know what's going on?
I know.
Okay. First, let me say that we, at this point, though, all the water line is installed, the interconnections are made, and all the storm drains have been installed at this point. We're at a point now where we are, we've got some conduit work to do that will facilitate the overland, overhead utility lines being placed underground. Skyline is building their aerial going down Grayson Street. Those guys are actually working today. Saw them doing some down on Grayson Street. The next significant phase of the project is going to begin around April the first. And that's going to be at the intersection here of Whitehead Street and Main Street. The good news regarding that is the mast arm poles that will be the new traffic signal, uh, hold those. We were told early on that we were 40 weeks out on receiving those poles, which was going to put that intersection work at the end of the project, which was going to be pretty disruptive to us, but means all the other work would have been going on. And we would not have been able to do some of the utility work and install the traffic signals until August, September, kind of a timeframe. We have now found out that those poles are going to be delivered to us late March or sometime in April. That's going to allow us to do the intersection work here first, which it makes more sense and is more logical to the overall construction of the project. So if you've noticed up there on the corner of the old bank building there in front of Ophias, and across the street in front of the courthouse, they have built the foundations for those mast arm poles. So that's a significant improvement, advancement in the construction to get those foundations in place. So when the poles arrive, one of the early things they'll be able to do is install those mast arm poles and get the traffic signals installed. We will begin, when this work begins at the intersection, because of the construction equipment and the poles and everything, the entire intersection will be closed for some period of time. We don't know exactly how long that'd be, but it's going to be at least a couple of weeks, and could stretch into a three-week period while that occurs. When we start that work, we're going to begin on just on the south side, just about this south end of the old Farmers Hardware Building. We will close the street there, and it will be closed going north to just before you get to Downton Street. Downton Street at this point in time will remain open, and that will be part of the detour for traffic. The priority is going to be right here at this intersection. When we get that closed down, because truck traffic will have to be detoured, they will not be able to go 21 to 18 north, or if they're coming into town, they get to here, they won't be able to go through this intersection. The bypass for 18-wheelers is going to be Shawtown Road and Clay Valley Road. So it is certainly going to be an inconvenient situation. Given that, that's the priority here will be to get this intersection opened up as soon as possible. Soon as that intersection is open, they'll move down here, and they'll continue working going north till they get down to Downton Street. Now, this, when I'm talking about construction, it's going to be the demolition of the road and the demolition of the sidewalks. The road, crown of the road here is about nine inches higher than what the finished grade of the sidewalk and curving gutter is going to be. So in the past, the DOT has come in and milled down a couple of inches, and then they come back and overlay. Well, over the years of doing that, we have, they have overlaid more asphalt than they have removed in the milling process. So we've gained significantly on the height of this road, which contributed quite a bit to our stormwater issues that we've all know about and have dealt with for many, many years, with the sidewalks actually being lower than the road. So we've had storefronts that flood from time to time, and we have a lot of water that's standing in the streets with no place to go. So this new storm drain is going to be really a huge benefit to all of our downtown merchants and to people traveling in town. So when we get to, let me get my, there and cheer you, we're working north. When we get to this point here, they're going to have, hopefully, there'll be at some points two crews working in here. So that will further speed up the construction process. When they start removing the sidewalk, there'll be temporary sidewalks will be put in place. They'll install the conduit for the electrical lines. They'll come in, put gravel placed down, and then they'll put temporary sidewalk, boardwalks, and they will construct temporary access to each storefront. So it's, our goal is to be sure that every storefront is minimized in terms of the, for people coming and going. Now, it's going to be a difficult situation under the best of circumstances, because we're going to have to have people crossing here and crossing here to access these businesses. But again, our goal is to work through that as quickly as we can, get the curving gutter poured. They'll come back then and put, do the bump outs, where those are going to be constructed. Then they'll put down a binder. That will be the first layer of asphalt. It won't be the finished grade, but it is, it will be fine for vehicular traffic. So when this portion is done, it'll jump over Downton Street, do the construction here. That will finish up the streetscape on the north side of town. Then we, they come here to the south side on South Main Street, and they'll do basically the same thing here. The street will be closed from here down to Cheek Street. And they'll be tearing up the sidewalks and the streets and reconstructing street and sidewalk on South Main. When this is completed to here, they'll jump across Cheek Street, finish up this intersection, and that will complete the Phase One and Phase Two of this streetscape project at that time. Then they'll come back and have to deal, have some finished work, but all of this will be usable at that point in time. There will be parking available, and there will be through traffic going on. Then they'll come back and mill down the entire road from Trojan Avenue to Grandview, and they do the, lay down the overlay. They do the finished striping, and at that point in time, we are going to be into mid to late August, in my estimation. And hopefully, we'll be wrapping the project up late August, early part of September. That's the schedule at this point in time.
When they close that street, will the police be able to get in and out?
When they close the street, where?
Right there.
Cheek Street?
Yeah, well, Grandview.
Well, Grandview, well, yeah, Grandview is not impacted by this.
Okay. I just wanted to think if you could get in and out.
Well, see, what we're talking about is Calvin Street to Cheek Street.
Okay.
So Grandview.
Down, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't want them to be blocked out.
Right. Grandview won't be impacted until the very end of the project, when we do the final milling down and overlay. And it'll be, the, just to give you an idea, when they, when they did the milling down and the overlay from Levins at the intersection up to Trojan Avenue, that was about two and a half days. They milled that down and put the new surface down in about two and a half days. So we're going to be looking at somewhere in two to three days, a period of time, but there'll still be a lane of traffic open for traffic while that is going on.
Okay.
Yeah. So we are, we had a meeting last Wednesday at the Jubilee. We had about 35, I think, folks there, Mayor.
Yep.
I gave them the same information, that was most of the downtown merchants and some other visitors, and so I think that generally, the word is beginning to be circulated around. The mayor and I will be doing this at the mayor manager show when we do that next week. And the newspaper will be putting some word out. Thank you, Zachary. And we'll be doing the regular updates. As we get into this construction, I'll be using the same email list that I've been using for the water line construction updates, and it will actually be on a more regular basis. We'll be doing this at least a couple of times a week, updating the merchants of where they're actually going to be working, and doing everything we can to accommodate those situations. I've talked to a couple of merchants already about deliveries that have to be made to their businesses. They don't have a backstreet entrance with the contractors. We've met with the contractors, and everybody is agreeable that we'll make every accommodation we can to keep business flowing, keep things moving as best we can.
Just to add to your point, too, when we had our merchant meeting, we discussed, give the merchants, like, their timeframe. Time is of the essence, and they want, they all agreed that get it all done as quickly as we possibly can.
That's a good point. One of the early considerations was to try to do this and keep traffic moving through the street, but that was going to really string the project out for a longer period of time, to try to do half the street and then block it off and come back and do the other half. And all of the merchants that we've been working with have said, shorter is better. Get the work done and get the street back opened up as soon as possible. So that's, that's our goal. That's our main objective at this point.
Thing is safer, too.
Yeah, and safer, absolutely. Much, much safer. Trying to, we would have to have barricades literally in the road and traffic, flagging traffic, and it's going to be much safer to shut it down, get it done, and move on. So that was an important consideration, too. Any other questions?
Well, I think the way the winter's been, that there's no doubt that the work that had scheduled.
I'm sorry?
So the way the winter has been, my old winner.
Oh, yeah.
There's no doubt in my mind that with the construction, they had it scheduled.
It has benefited us considerably, yes.
So I'm thinking things will be ahead as we progress on.
We hope so. And the contractor has said, anytime it's possible, they're going to have two crews in here working instead of one, so that we can, as long as they're not trying to work on top of each other. If there's areas where they can have it working on both ends, that's what they intend to do.
And you can already tell a big difference in the drainage system that's been put in. A lot of people have noticed that the water is already flowing a million times better than what it was before. And we've still got a little more work to do on that. But once we get all this thing done, we'll get rid of that water that's on the street. It's going to look good. But thank you, Brian, for that report. We'll move on into your manager's report if you'd like.
Okay. Last month, I reported about the Crestview Booster Pump Project. We approved a change order there to install the SCADA system. That work is scheduled to be done by mid-March. So everything's on schedule to wrap this project up by the end of March, and that system is working really well. Very pleased to have that, all that work done. While we are doing the SCADA on this Crestview project, we got some pricing on doing SCADA for the Magnolia Water Tank. We do have money in the budget to do that. Discussed that with the mayor, and for, it's an $8,000 project. That gives us a huge amount of abilities to regulate and monitor the water system at that Magnolia plant. As an example, last week, week before last, we had a water line main break on Twin Oaks Mountain, 10-inch water line that was just on the south side of the pump station. We got the notification on that, and within 45 minutes, our operators were able to respond to that and shut the water off and minimize the loss and disruption that would have occurred. So, and without the SCADA system, we would not have had, we would not have known about that water line break until we got notifications, somebody coming up the road and notifying us that there was water. So, and we have learned from our experience at the water plant, we're able to monitor the pumps and the operation of that water plant remotely. If there's any kind of a malfunction that goes on, the operator gets an alarm, we're able to respond to it in a very timely basis. And so that water tank on, out on Pine Swamp Road, it's a 100,000 gallon tank. It's the primary source of water for the Magnolia Manufacturing Plant and all points south of that. So I think this SCADA, again, the operators can monitor the tank levels. If there's any kind of a significant discharge or anything malfunctions, they get an, they get an alarm, and they're able to respond to it very quickly. So we're going to go ahead and have that installed while we do the Crestview project. Next item, Mr. Mayor, I've had a request for the council to consider those lighting at the intersections along the Sparta Parkway. And I've observed that since I had this request, there are no significant street lights at the intersections of 18, the Sparta Parkway, out at the Levins, and also at this end. So with the council's approval, I would, we do a letter to DOT requesting them to study that matter, and if appropriate, install the appropriate lighting at the intersection. I think it is a safety situation. If you've been through there late at night, it's, it's pretty dark at those intersections. I would think, Mr. Mayor, we would need some action on that.
You need a motion? She made it, I'll say.
Motion. A motion in a second. Any discussion on that? A show of hands on approval? Five oh.
Good luck.
Yeah. Just like some of our others' requests. The next item, last week, we attended a meeting in Lenore, a number of us here, the county representatives and from the town and Chamber of Commerce. Golden Leaf is having another round of funding available to the Northwest Prosperity Zone, which is 12 counties in northwest North Carolina. It's an application process similar to what we went through about four years ago. At that time, it's when the county was able to get the money for the library, when they, when the library was moved off Main Street and the construction was done over at the Wilkes Community BDC campus. It's going to be a similar process based on what we've been told, and the county will be the lead on it, but the town certainly will have an opportunity to have some input in it. But the priorities for the funding will be economic investment and job creation, workforce preparedness and education, agriculture, and community vitality. So there are four primary areas that the Golden Leaf folks are going to be looking at. And what this will involve is a collaboration of county, town, and education folks, and chamber, and citizens in general, to put their ideas forward in terms of what we believe the priorities for the, within these four broad categories. So there will be more information coming out about that. It's a 10-month process. We just got the initial information last week, so we're in the very early stages of it. But I think it's something as we go into the spring and summer season, we'll be hearing more and more about it, and there certainly will be opportunities for the town council members and others to offer suggestions about type of projects that we might want to see funded. There's, $11 million has been allocated to the Northwest Prosperity Zone, and it will be on a competitive basis. Applications will have to be submitted based on the Golden Leaf criteria, and then the awards will be made based on the judging. But the county will be the lead entity in terms of the prioritizing the projects that come from Allegheny County. So if the town had a project, it would still be up to the county to provide that ranking in terms of priority. Any questions on that? Next item is the fire tax, and I think all of us have heard some discussion about the consideration of the county to go to a fire service district. At this point in time, I don't have a lot of information. I have attended one meeting with some county commissioners and manager, and representative from High Country Council who went through the process. One of the, there's two ways that it could impact the town, and I don't believe at this point there's been any decision made about it, but it's certainly being discussed. If the county imposes the fire service districts, the town could be excluded from that, and so the corporate limits of the town of Sparta would be its own service district, and that would be up to the town, and they would not be included in the county service districts. The other method would be for the county to, by resolution, say that they wanted the town to be included in a service district, and then the Sparta, Allegheny Fire District, as it now exists, would include the incorporated area. So that service district would be treated like the other four. So at this point in time, the county really, I don't think there's been any kind of a significant decisions are made. I know they're having discussions with the fire departments, and the timeline and timeframe to get this done is going to be pretty tight.
I think they're going to go to each district fire department and have a public.
Public hearing.
Whatever, so people can say what they want to about it, if they want to get it going.
As I understand it, if they, if the county goes through with this, it would have to be implemented as of July 1. If it's, they cannot implement it on any other date other than July 1. So if this July 1 date, we're not ready, or it's missed, then it would be next year, July 1, before it could be implemented.
I don't think we'd want to be excluded.
Included?
I said, I don't think we want to be excluded. Then what are we going to do for fire protection?
Well, it would all be, it would all be on the town.
Well, I don't think that would be a realistic option at all.
No. No, I think we would want to be included in the service district for the whole.
Right. Like we are now.
That we are now. That's right. That would be my thinking.
How would they even consider not including us?
Well, by state law, that's just one of the provisions of the state law. It says that unless the town, by resolution, gives up.
Chooses.
Chooses, then automatically, we are excluded from being included in the service district.
Well, I see a lot of towns, I guess a lot of cities have a paint fire department, etc.
That's right.
So we're not in that situation.
That's exactly right. Says the fire protection service district area is include, will include property lying and being within the unincorporated boundaries of the county, and the incorporated limits of towns unless the incorporated entities pass a resolution to accept the fire protection service district as provided by the county. So that's, that's how it would work.
We'd have to make a resolution.
We would have to do a resolution, but the county's not to that point yet. But I would expect by the April meeting, we would pretty much need to know what, what's going on, and I'll have the appropriate resolution at that time. Terry, you know anymore about it?
Pretty much covered the bases, I think.
Not to jump ahead, but we do have our joint meeting coming up at the end of the month.
Right.
This, this will be a great time to ask those commissioners.
Yeah.
What's going on, and where they, where they're at. I think it might be a good time for fire department guys to also be there, too, to kind of weigh in a little bit more, too, especially in their joint.
Do you know if there are any meetings planned at this time? Are there any dates for any?
Yeah, I think we've got one Sparta, March, sometime last March, I would say the 30th.
Well, now 30th is our joint meeting.
That's our joint meeting, isn't it?
Maybe it's 29th. I can't remember.
Well, now 29th will be on a Sunday. Yeah. 30th, March 30th would be Monday.
I remember them saying, but it's last March, sometime. I can't remember exactly what day. That's going to be at Sparta, and then they'll go to each fire district through and put meetings.
Are they going to conduct that at the county building?
Be at the fire.
Be at the firehouse. Be at the firehouse. Okay. I'll get that information and make sure we all know about it.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions? That's, that's really all I know about the fire tax at this time. It's been not, not a lot of information out right now. I shared with you a junk vehicle ordinance. I did have a visit, a citizen asking about junk cars. Our newest ordinance does not address junk cars or abandoned cars, other than if they're parked in a public parking lot or a public area. So I don't know, I'll just make, that if we were going to consider that type of ordinance, that's not something we would do in short order. That, that would require a couple of public hearings. It would require a review of ordinances, and in my opinion, pretty serious consideration of the budget implications.
I was going to say, and a budget to.
And budget. So, so I don't have, unless anybody's got a question or whatever, I just shared that with you because we did have an inquiry about junk cars.
I would like to look into that, Paul. I think it's, we've got that situation around where a lot of junk cars, it could be health reasons there, it could have rodents in them there, and they look hostile.
Yeah.
I think we need to look into that right there and see what, what we can do and what it's going to take.
I mean, nobody likes to ever tell anybody what to do with their property, but, you know, like Mike said, I mean, that's a health concern, housing mice, rats, mosquitoes, you know, and then not to mention what could be leaking from, getting into the groundwater. And then for people who buy and sell and rent homes. And then for people who buy and sell and rent homes for profit. I mean, that really puts a burden on them as well.
Let me just mention a couple of things that would be important for consideration. One is there would have to be a containment yard that meets the general statutes where these vehicles would be stored. We currently do not have such a facility in the county that I'm aware of. So that would be, you know, a pretty significant situation to address right up front. Secondly, would be the operators who would remove the vehicles. And there would have to be some arrangement there, a contract, so that a business would, after the legal notifications and those requirements are dealt with, would go onto the private property and remove the cars and put them into this storage facility. So, and what I'll do, if the council wants to see this, kind of do an outline of the things that would have to be considered and try to attach maybe some budgetary numbers so that you can see. But it would be a pretty extensive undertaking.
Well, now, I've seen some ordinances where the town didn't have to have an impound yard. They would just impose a penalty to the person to give them a certain number of days to remove their car. And if they didn't, then they would be hit with a penalty. And then if it wasn't done again, then another penalty until, you know, I think after getting hit with a penalty, somebody would take care of their own vehicle and either get it running or have it removed and set. And then they put the burden on the owner and not the town.
I have, I have seen where the penalties would be the first step. But at some point in time, you know, there would have to be.
We got to enforce it.
It's just our nuisance.
There's statutes already about health hazards. And we need to look at that a little closer. I know that if it's anywhere close to a water source, there's already state statutes in place that would require them to take action. So there's already, we certainly don't want any health hazards or anything like that. Breeding grounds for vermin and mosquitoes, etc. But there are already, I think we've checked with Appalachian District Health Department and see, I know that if it's near a water source, then they could step in and take action.
Well, my experience with that is, they won't, they won't do that. I mean, we've called them.
Well, okay.
Yeah, now, again, that may change, but my experience would be, they say unless the town or county has an ordinance that provides them additional support, they will.
Well, now, there was a situation up, not mentioning any names, up on the north end of town where they did come in because there was a bunch of refuse and vehicles and things. I think vehicles too, near a creek, and that was taken care of here in the past couple of months.
Okay, good, I'll get with you and get some information on that. But that would be certainly a good way to start approaching it if the health department would be a partner to it and.
I think we need to look into it. I'd be interested. Let your town go, I mean, if we're going to have, spend several million dollars on streetskates and we're going to have a bunch of junk cars around.
Yeah, and one of the, and one of the things we could look at is making it easier for these owners to dispose of these vehicles. I mean, we might offer some sort of incentive for them to let those cars be picked up and scrapped and.
Yeah, because if you find them three or four times, they don't have any money, that's not going to make any difference to them, they still sit there.
Yeah, yeah.
As a part of what to do, Brian, I'd like to know a general sense of how many.
I was just wondering that myself.
This is what we have that this ordinance, if we passed it, would apply to. I mean, I know it could change in the future, but just right off the top of the bat, when we first put this in place, that's when people will expect us to take some action. So I'd be interested in knowing, okay, we're looking at one place, we're looking at two places.
I was going to say six cars, thirty cars.
We're looking at several, but I'll do a survey and have that information.
Are we looking at just one car?
Two cars, twenty cars.
Well, I can think of, I can think of one neighborhood, and there's, within that one neighborhood, there's at least four residences that have four to six cars that appear to be abandoned or junk cars in the yard. So that, you know, that's about, that's 24 in one neighborhood. And so we can certainly look around and provide some information.
It might be a bigger problem than we think.
It's probably a bigger problem if you live in that neighborhood.
But we would have to budget to get it reinforced.
Right, yeah, but what I'll do is.
The parking cars like up at Shaw.
Yeah.
The state gives you 10 days. That car can sit on your premises, and 10 days, you got to send off a paper that's AOT something.
AOT ninety.
Yeah, it goes to Raleigh. Then it gives you so many days, it comes back, you have to fill out another paper intent to sell the vehicle, you send it back to Raleigh. It comes back to you, then you have to go to the clerk of court of Susie's, and she fills out a paper, you send it back to Raleigh, they send you another paper, and then you go see Cole and get a title, because you got $300, $350 tied up in a $100 car. Turn this in and done, you know.
Yeah, that's what I think, we really have to know the full picture and understand the cost implications. And then we make an informed decision on what we do.
And actually, if you don't send it in 10 days, they can actually fine you for it, so.
Terry is full of good news.
What's also known as the beating the dead horse order.
I'm kind of like, I like Cole's idea there, you know, where you put it on them, you know, to do something.
But if they can't afford to do anything without moving, we're still stuck.
If they can't afford to do something, you can sell a car for a $100.
$100 for scrap.
I mean, say, well, we can sell this car for you for $100 to get it out of their way. It'd be worth less paying another $100.
If you're a junk car seller, you're three.
Yeah, but we're not a junk car selling business.
You never know what kind of business you get.
Is the council willing to let Brian go ahead and check in all logistics on this?
Just get some more information.
And come back with us?
Yeah.
And I don't think we need to motion or anything with that. I think everybody's just in consensus to let him do some more research and come back with some numbers for us.
Okay, we'll do that. Next item is a reminder of our joint meeting with the county commissioners scheduled for Monday, March 30th, 6:30 PM at the county commissioner's meeting room. And under the events, the Lions Club requests permission to do their can shake. And they would like to do it at Grandview Drive. They're going to do it on April the 3rd and 4th. And based on our construction schedule right now, very likely the intersection will be closed. So they say they're agreeable to do it down here at Grandview. And it would be on the Friday afternoon and then Saturday morning until about noon.
You motion for that?
I do.
I'll make it.
Motion second, all in favor, show of hands.
And also the Christ Cross Walk, and that will be done on Easter Friday, April the 10th. And I'm working with the organizers right now to determine, pretty clearly on April the 10th, we will be in construction at that intersection on Main Street. So we'll work with them on an alternate route. They typically leave from Sparta School and end at the Baptist Church. So Roger Collins is supposed to come by and meet with me in a few days. And we'll talk about what alternate route might work for them.
Maybe coming down Grayson Street, probably down that way.
Yeah, there's a couple of options that we're thinking about, maybe Evergreen Junction down and then. But we'll work with them. This event has already been approved by the council. It's a matter now of just clarifying what the route would be.
And we'll know that on our April meeting, when we come back. Anything else for your events there that you want to?
Nope.
Thank you, Brian, for your manager's report, appreciate that. We'll move on to other business and I'll let Millie, council member Millie Richardson, talk about some chlorine.
Just briefly, we discussed a couple of months back about the water situation and how the water was good coming out of the river. And I know it has to be treated. Now, as I was campaigning and talking to folks around and calling people, one of the concerns that people had was the chlorine in the water. And in some instances, it was unpalatable to them, of course. In some instances, it was an offensive odor. And in some instances, it is an irritant to your skin if you have delicate skin or you are sensitive, or you're a little baby's skin and sensitive areas that you have sensitive skin. And I had some comments about that sort of thing. So my question is, do we really need all the chlorine we're putting in there? Or might we not look at that and back off on that a little bit? And I don't need any, I just want to bring that up, you get back with us?
Well, yeah, I can address it, but I certainly will get back with more. But generally, we are required to treat.
And I know that started in what, '95 or something?
Oh, no, no, it's, I think chlorine treatment's been much longer than that, but I don't know.
But the state mandated it, except for.
Yeah, it's a state mandate. Now, we do check our chlorine every week. And we have prescribed locations where the operator, and those locations have to be identified and the state approves them. And if you change that schedule, and they, what they want to see is that you've got locations all throughout the town, that you don't just check the water here at Town Hall and send that in. We have to check the extremes and certain locations. And there's a minimum number of locations that have to be tested. So that's done every week. Our levels typically are just over what the state requires. We treat it very minimally, but we do have to treat it to a certain level. We do have to test at the hospital, nursing home, schools. All of those locations are required to be checked. And you do have to make sure that you maintain those state-required minimums at those locations. So, and we test at all the other locations. I'm not aware that we ever have incidences that are very high. But as you mentioned, different people have different sensitivities. Some people who are on certain drugs or chemotherapy or different things, they have no tolerance for chlorine at all. And it really is distressing to them and to their system. There's really nothing we can do about that. I mean, that's just an unfortunate circumstance. And other people just have sensitivities to it, and it varies by individual. But if there's a particular location, we certainly would be glad to look at that. But I would just offer this, in a neighborhood, the level of chlorine within a neighborhood is not going to vary very much from house A, B, C, D. If you're within that, if you're within that neighborhood, you're getting the water that your neighbors get in. And so if we had serious issues, I believe we would be hearing about it here if the whole neighborhood was, for example, over in Green Acres. If Terry was having an issue with chlorine, it wouldn't be just Terry.
Oh, absolutely.
It would be, all the people up and down the street would be. So we'd be happy to check. Anybody that, if you would just give me names and address, we'll be happy to check those locations and see if there's anything extraordinary going on.
Well, and that's what I needed to know, because I did have some questions, and that certainly answers that question, and that's just the way it is.
Now, some of that stuff has changed too since we've switched from the wells too, right? Because used to, we had several areas on wells.
It's much better now.
But now we're all in one system.
Yeah, we chlorinate now at one system. Now, we do have one well that comes into town where we do still chlorinate there because the distance that the water travels, you lose your chlorination benefit. So there has to, what you would almost call a booster at some strategic points to be sure that you're maintaining those minimal levels. So when we chlorinate at the water plant, by the time that water travels to the locations here and then it goes into the water tanks, we have to chlorinate it at enough level to be sure that when it gets to the hospital or the nursing home or the schools, that we're at those state mandated levels. So there's a little bit of a science to it, and in time, and with, and checking it like we do, we're able to see elevated levels very quickly. And that is something our guys monitor. And they monitor it when it leaves the water plant, and then they monitor it in other locations along the way. So it's something we certainly take very serious, and we stay within the state compliance.
Is that okay?
That's what we want to know.
Just a couple of notes and other business. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize our Allegheny High School wrestlers that competed in the state. I think we sent four there. I think we had one third place, one fourth, and a couple down the line there. Congratulations to those guys. Also want to give a shout out to our Lady Trojan basketball team that has made it to the fourth round of the state playoffs. They'll be playing again tomorrow night up here at home against Mitchell County. So we want to wish them the best. And for everybody that has questioned me and asked me why the green lights are on in town, the green lights are on because we're winning, just like Mike Falier says. When we're winning, we're going to put some green lights on. So if it's dark, we ain't winning, okay? But no, our girls are up there and they're doing a great job, and we want them to know that we support them 100, 110%. They're doing a great job, and thanks to the light crew for turning the lights on for us green. We appreciate that. There being no other business, I'm going to go ahead and open our floor up for public comments. So if anybody has any public comment, they can come to the podium, please state your name, and I'll give you three minutes there for your public comment.
My name's Terry Jones, and I'm concerned about the junk car problem. If you come in our town, we're spending $5 million to beautify the place. If you come up 18, there's one car lot. He's now, and I heard a rumor that maybe his property is in subject of repossessing it. He's now pushed 10 cars down into the stream down there. We just talked about water pollution and things like that. There's other places where we have cars. But that's really an eyesore, as you come uptown. Before you get a block away from town, you've got this ugly site. We removed a hotel that was there, now we just moved in a car lot. That has now become a problem. Now he's taking advantage of us, I'm afraid that unless you find a way to remove those cars, he's going to stick us with them to get them out of that stream down. Now it becomes an EPA problem. The other thing about the car, junk cars, people don't have tags on them right away. That ought to be a rule right there, they're sitting in their yard. Then they should be forced to have to take them. I think that's a state law. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Terry, appreciate that. Anybody else that would like to come up to the podium for public comment?
Yeah, homework.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Miles, and I'm here with the Sparta Revitalization Committee. A few years ago, we had a facade grant, and we're doing it again this year. This facade grant is available for any business that is between the Welcome to Sparta signs. So here's my trivial pursuit question, and you can't answer it if you were at the meeting the other night. How many businesses do you think are in the city, not the city limits, the town, Welcome to Sparta to Welcome to Sparta signs on April 21?
How many are you about?
Forty-five, what?
Hundred.
Hundred, you're closer. There's over 150 businesses. If you count, and I'm, for example, if you count Walker's Welding, it's inside that area.
It is.
Okay, if you count, there's two businesses there where Heather Klein just moved to. So if you count all of them, there's over 150. So there's a whole lot of businesses that survive because we shop with those businesses. So it's just amazing to me how many we do have in such a small town. But what this facade grant is for is to help individual businesses. And they put an application in, this is the whole thing, it's not complicated. And we probably will not be able to help everyone because we're hoping there'll be a lot of people that will put in their applications. But if it's a $2,000 project, we could pay up to $1,000 on it. If it's a $200 project, we'll pay $100 of it. And it could be as simple as putting a ramp in or painting something or a sign. But I've got more of these. I wanted each of y'all to have one so you could share it with someone if you wanted to. And I just thank each of you all for serving and hope that if you know a business owner that would like to have something done to their business, even directional signs, you know, please do this and let us have a way of helping. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, appreciate what you do, appreciate that. Appreciate what you do. Appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to come up to the podium? There being no movement, we will close our public comments. At this time, we need a motion so that we may go into closed session for the instruction on the contract for some real property and some personnel issues.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Show of hands, 5-0. At this time, we will move into our closed session.